Good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's March 10th City Council meeting. We are recorded by video and audio in accordance with the open-meeting law. And we're going to do a flag salute in a moment of silence. Councilor Gilman, would you like to do the flag salute?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have the first order of business, please?
First order of business is oral communications.
So, the public has -- shall have the opportunity at every regularly-scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has requested -- who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council and state their problem without debate. And the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks, period, relative to the disposition of same. And a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communications shall not be limited -- shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performances. Is there anybody here that would like to speak under oral communications? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is a presentation from Karen Carroll, Public Health Director, regarding the coronavirus update.
Hey, Karen, how are you?
Good. Hello, everybody, and thanks for having me. I'm just going to go through an update I gave this morning. It's kind of divided into sections because there is a lot of information here. And then if there's things I missed or things you want me to answer, we can have a few minutes for that. So, I'm sure you've all heard lots and lots about coronavirus or COVID-19 in the news. The media started with this a few weeks ago as it moved off the shores of China and started arriving here. We have -- we, at that point, started planning with a very small group of two or three of us, talking about how this might affect us, what we might do. And then it's obviously the rest has gone from there. So, as of tonight, so daily activities that the Health Department is undertaking. First of all, we're monitoring hourly, daily, but really now hourly, every few hours, the CDC, the DPH websites throughout the day, seven days a week. As of 4:00 PM today, the state of Massachusetts had 91 cases. These are presumptives, which are pretty much confirmed. They just have to go through that final step at CDC. So, they're reported as cases here in the Commonwealth. We are the fourth state in the country. So, it's a significant number for us being on the East Coast. However, it's not completely unexpected, given that the testing has just become available in the last few days, and even still in spots is slow and a slow process. So, we expected that these numbers would rise dramatically for a little while, kind of like with flu. If you start testing for it, you're going to see it. But that's where we're at. And I'm sure some of you saw the governor declared a state of emergency today and had a press conference. I'm not an expert on all the details of what that triggers, but I do know that it allows for different resources to be requested. It just allows you a little more freedom as a community and as a Commonwealth to request additional resources mainly in how you handle things. So, we're having daily updates. Myself and the mayor, every morning at 7:30, have a check-in. And the mayor has been great in flagging things that the public health world maybe hasn't thought about yet, especially with our local community and high-risk populations, how to reach them. So, that's really helpful. It also acts as a conduit to the mayor's office, the rest of the city, and then our elected officials in Boston as well. We have daily communication between the City of Gloucester Health Department and AGH and Beverly Hospital team. So, that's also been really helpful. They've been able to give us technical advice, let us know what they're seeing. And they have us on, you know, on their cellphones. We talked over the weekend. So, that's been great. And the information is going both ways as we learn things. We implemented the Incident Command structure, which some of you, I know, understand and have drilled and been part of our drills on Incident Command. Incident Command is a model that's used worldwide, actually, to respond to emergencies. And it's not new to this community, thank goodness. Everyone speaks the language. People understand the roles. So, we implemented our Incident Command about a week ago in just the Health Department and with the mayor's office as a planning tool, as a way to plan our work and kind of get people thinking about certain areas because the information was coming fast and furious. I think that was really helpful. It allowed me to come off of my other duties completely for the moment. Max Chenk is running the day-to-day operations of the Health Department. All grant work is being coordinated by Jenna Newbegin. And some things have been put on hold as needed. But we felt, given the seriousness and given how quickly things were changing, we really wanted to be on top of it. And we knew that meant having all eyes on it, not just jumping in and out of, geez, should we do a press release? And then getting called off into three or four meetings, not getting back to later in the day. We also pulled our public health nurse off all of her other duties, so she's solely available to monitor the clinical situation and be thinking about what clinical steps we can take in conjunction with our board, DPH, and CDC. That also, part of the Incident Command system was implementing the PIO function or the public communications, the public information outreach. And that's been really helpful. We'll talk more about that in a minute. Ongoing efforts are, the mayor has established a team in conjunction with us that I head, and we meet twice a week, every Tuesday morning and Friday morning. We've been meeting for a couple of weeks now, as I said. It involves the mayor's office, Health Department, schools, police, fire officials, local hospital representatives, the long-term care facilities, which, as you know, are the highest-risk population at this point for this particular disease, and local partner agencies that are serving that population in high volumes. The rest, we've been communicating to through an email distribution list that we use during snowstorms that we had in place. The mayor put that process in place a couple of years ago now in John. So, we have some systems in place that have worked really well to get information out quickly. The group meets twice, as I said, two times a week. As of Friday, we'll be moving to virtual meetings, just in case there is an exposure in our community. We don't want to be in a situation like other communities where a number of our officials were in the same room together and then all have to be quarantined. So, as, just out of an abundance of caution, we're going to move those meetings to virtual on Friday, and we'll have a call in. James from IT has been fabulous, and he is assisting us with that. We have frequent communication to the Lieutenant Governor, Bruce Tar, Representative Ann-Margaret Ferrante, as they work closely with the Mass Department of Public Health and the Commissioner Burrell. Some of the areas that we need our legislators to really be thinking about is things like insurance covering all tests to do with COVID-19. We don't want people not going for a test or for care or seeing a doctor because they don't have insurance or they don't think a test will be covered or there'll be a large copay. So, the mayor's office has been great at bringing those issues to the forefront of the governor's office, also thinking about sick leave and unpaid sick leave for the many workers throughout the country that are not paid if they don't go to work. So, this will be a big barrier to preventing the spread of any virus or flu or something like COVID-19. We want people to know they can stay home if they are sick. And we want them to know it won't mean a choice between food on the table for their families. Until that legislation goes through, we've been talking with businesses. We've been talking as a city. What does that mean for our own employees? What does it mean for your employees? If they are sick and you have part-time people or contract people, how are you dealing with that? Beginning to think about it with HR directors, that kind of thing. Frequent, and then connecting them to services if needed. So, if people are going to be without pay, we want to make sure they know immediately how to access open door and other services that they might need. We're frequently updating the city website with relevant CDC and DPH links. The important word there is links because things are changing. Documents that came up last week are being taken down because they're no longer accurate. So, a lot of changes there. So, we felt the best thing to do would be drive people to our website, to the links where people can get on. The CDC has a great website with information for all types of people. If you're caring for senior, if you're working in a school, if you're a parent, if you're a, you know, any of the categories for businesses, it's got lots of great information. And we're relying on that for our main source of information right now as well. Our State Department of Public Health is pretty inundated at the moment, although they are setting up weekly calls with us starting tomorrow. So, that will be helpful as well. We produced one short video that is now circulating. And through our PIO, we have a really clear structure of disseminating any information so that we stay on message, we get enough information out, but not too much panicking people. We don't want to hit you with 50 Facebook things about washing your hands because we don't want to cause alarm. This is similar to a flu. So, we want the same message to go out. We want it to be consistent, and we want people to know that they'll be getting regular updates. Our PIO has been great. Again, through the city and the mayor's office, we've been able to establish all of our Facebook managers. And so, they'll all be managing their Facebook page and be given the same information. And those of you who have Facebook pages, you know, you can certainly look to our Health Department website or Facebook page for information and share those posts. We would encourage you to. The Gloucester Daily Times has been provided now. The second article, I think, will come out tomorrow from us. The first article was general precautions and information. The second article tomorrow is going to be sharing some of these things that the city is doing. I think there's a lot of information in the general media about what to do. You can turn the news on. You can hear everything that we're hearing. But I think what people like to know is what's happening locally, what is Gloucester doing? Are we prepared? What's happening in our community? So, we hope that article will help as well as this talk tonight. Our main area of concern is our seniors. So, as I mentioned, there are certain populations who are being, who are more vulnerable with this particular disease. It's a little bit different than the flu, so it doesn't seem to affect children. Babies are somehow immune to this so far, or they may just be acting as carriers, but just not showing symptoms. So, again, it's one of the mysteries of this thing, but it doesn't seem to be spreading and causing symptoms in young people. It's predominantly older people. I think the average death is 80 years old for this disease, and it's predominantly people with secondary health conditions. It does affect some people with heart disease and diabetes and other lung disease. So, those are the other three chronic diseases that this virus seems to have the most impact on. So, those are the groups that we're targeting with our messaging, our outreach. So, yesterday, in conjunction with the board, we issued a memo to all long-term care facilities here in Gloucester, requiring that they screen all visitors, in-person screening for the three, the main risk factors, based on CDC. So, it's their travel history and signs and symptoms. We've had full cooperation with that. And in fact, the nursing homes today informed us they'll probably go the next level today or tomorrow with restricting visitors to a shorter window of time, three hours, which will allow them to more carefully screen, not use up nursing time as much during the day for that, and also just reduce the number of visitors coming in and out of the nursing home. We also sent a memo to all senior-serving agencies in our community, asking them to post signage and hand sanitizer, asking them to, for people to self-screen when they come in, again, asking those three questions. So, our partner agencies are putting those up as well. There are some limitations at this point for senior activities. The direction from CDC at this point is to avoid crowded situations. Older adults and populations at risk should avoid older crowded, sorry, should avoid crowded situations. So, we're working with our senior agencies kind of case by case, event by event, on that. But at this point, the recommendation is that for seniors, they should not be in crowded situations. So, we're trying to tease out exactly, is that a number of people or an amount of space they have? We've come down to a recommendation of whatever the capacity of your room is, you want to look at about half the capacity of that. So, that's a good guideline that seems to be helping us with our planning today. For the homeless population, that's another area of, another population, the community that we always are particularly concerned about because they're living in close quarters. It would, it's difficult to plan for if we had to quarantine one of those residents or if one of those residents was to be diagnosed. So, we are working really closely with our friends at Action and the state to come up with a plan there, how we could isolate some of their clients if we needed to. So, we're not completely there. We had a number of ideas that were floated out today. We had some other folks in the community offering resources. So, we're trying to think that through, and by tomorrow, hopefully, have a firm plan for that. Also, back to the seniors, I just wanted to mention, we're doing some publicity for seniors on the precautions they can take, the CDC recommendations as of now, and also the sort of checking on your neighbor model that we've all talked about before, that neighbors, if you have elderly neighbors, it's important that they have a contact person, that if they are home alone or their caregiver gets sick and can't continue to take care of them, that they have other folks who'll be checking in and at least letting us know, or senior care. And then we can try to connect something in those situations. The schools are developing a protocol. We actually have it now, based on CDC guidance, as to when and for how long schools will be closed in the event of a exposure, someone from the school community who is confirmed or if there's a contact with a confirmed case. So, there's sort of different decision trees. But that's in place. The schools have partnered with us to make sure that we're all on the same page. They are preparing for off-site learning and working through issues of continuity for free lunch, special education, and students without internet access at home. The DPW, as of Friday, implemented new enhanced cleaning protocols to include more frequent wiping down of high-touch surfaces in the schools and the buses. The buses is the schools, under the schools. And CADA also partnered with us on Friday, started a protocol of wiping down all high-touch surfaces on their buses between every shift. The schools will begin monitoring absenteeism. And again, that's something we'll be working with some of our business community as well to monitor. Just helps give us a heads-up of how fast it's coming, how many people are sick, how quickly to make the next lot of recommendations. I can't read what I wrote there. Continuity of operations. So, we're thinking a lot about how would the city continue to run in the Health Department? How would we continue our core essential functions that have to happen for other disease prevention, food safety, Title V, those sort of essential functions? We've asked today at our planning meeting, the mayor's managers' meeting, all of the managers were, have been given a copy of the city's plan and asked to start really thinking that through. Should they have widespread absenteeism in their department? What are their core essential functions? Again, thanks to our EMS and our emergency management team and good planning over the past years, we have a plan. It's in place. And so, it was a matter of pulling it out, going over it, what are our essential functions, who will do what? And so, I think that that's been really important for us. The city PIO officer was appointed, and it's Carol McMahon from our Emergency Department, Emergency Management Department. She's acting at the moment as the PIO with Joe Il as a backup. She's handling all communications. And again, it's all going through her, which is great. So, if we hear of a communication need or a request, we take the emails. We're keeping great lists of everything and then prioritizing the work because it's not, you know, there's only a few of us over there in the Health Department. But we are prioritizing. Again, it's seniors and most immediate needs. So, we prioritize those communication needs as well, and Carol will be pushing them out. We're on top of those now and even have some canned messages ready to roll as we move forward about prevention efforts, et cetera. A city inventory manager was also appointed, and that's John Sanger in our emergency EMS department. So, he really is the one that has the best shot of getting resources. He's been great. He's coordinating the resources for police, health, and any other requests that come in from the city for hand sanitizers for the homeless. We're channeling it through him. He's coordinating those orders and then prioritizing how they get delivered. A community business liaison has been set up as well through our Community Development Department. That's Sal, and he is working with our businesses to make sure that there's outreach with them, that they're getting information quickly. He's linked them to the CDC sites. He has established a conference call for later in the week, offering guidance, and he's fielding all calls about events and things so that we can give the advice. We found on day one, we were getting hammered with, you know, should I have this event or that? And it really needed to not be our priority at the moment, other than if there was an imminent threat. So, we're working through, again, the guidance is changing daily, hourly, as you can see. I mean, the governor's, you know, in his office, things changed quickly today there for them. So, he's handling all of that outreach and kind of helping the business community to be as proactive as they can. We're going to quarantine you. Just wash your hands really well. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of what we're doing is exactly what Val is doing, just good infection control. It's the only tool we have with this one. 20 seconds, keep going. We're reminding people to sing "Happy Birthday" twice. I mean, all these things we did during H1N1, all these things we do every year for flu preparedness. We hope that these efforts will control not only coronavirus, but also flu and other, you know, germs roaming around. It's really only, the only tool we have, as I said. We don't have a vaccine yet. That will be a year, year and a half before there is a vaccine that's tested and able to be administered. And we don't really have any Tamiflu or treatments, that kind of thing. It's supportive care, it's rest, it's hydration, that sort of thing for, or hospitalization if people have severe symptoms. It's probably a lot of things I forgot, but I'm happy to, if you have a few questions, or you can certainly just reach out to us, and we will triage your concerns. Yeah.
Are there any councilor questions? Councilor Gilman?
Thank you so much. Is there a possibility that we could take that short video for today that you did and put that on a roadshow to the five housing authority organizations and just, just have it, you know, rolling so people could go into the common area and watch it? It just seems, if that's the area of most exposure and concern, it's very calming. I thought you did a really good job, just being very clear, very factual, but it's just the thought.
Sure. I'll forward that to Carol. Thank you. If they have the capacity to broadcast them in their waiting rooms or wherever. Dave Holden is also at our planning meetings, as well as we're reaching out to Central Gramercy, all the senior housing. But that's great. Thank you.
Councilor Memmhard?
Karen, thank you very much. And thank you to the administration for addressing this with such advanced engagement. In thinking about these city protocols, could you just speak a little bit to, if someone feels ill, my understanding is, and you can clarify this, please, you shouldn't necessarily take yourself to the hospital, the ER. You should contact your primary care physician if you have one. I just want, if you could talk a little bit more about that initial process and what people should do if they feel anxious or concerned, and how the hospitals, Addison Gilbert and our primary care physician network tie in with the city on this?
Right. If patients are sick, if they feel sick, they should reach out to their provider, their primary care providers. That's where we're directing all those kinds of questions. So, there's a lot of information out about what the key criteria are for a person at risk. So, you would have had to travel to certain countries, have certain symptoms, come in contact with someone who was a confirmed case. So, these are the kinds of things that you would be, if all of a sudden you started having symptoms, you might, you know, connect those dots and go to providers. I think that information is out there, and people are doing that. They are calling their primary care providers. The prime, the part about what happens next is a little bit fluid. And, you know, if someone is really sick and they're calling 911, that's, that's what they're going to do, and that's what they should do. They'll be taken to the hospital, and they'll be assessed what, if they need to be tested. If there's just sick-flu-like symptoms, when you're going to call your doctor, they're going to ask you if you go into a hospital. If you go to any sort of healthcare place right now, they ask, those are the top three things they're asking you. Did you go to China? You know, did you have these, any of these fact, risk factors? Mm-hmm. Northern Italy now. And then they're going to rule out other things. So, they'll have you come in and do, and there are protocols for doctors' offices to follow. So, the patient, you're supposed to call ahead. You're not supposed to just show up. Supposed to call ahead to your doctor. They're supposed to have a mask in a room ready, and they'll take you into a private area, and you'll be assessed at that point. And you may be sent home to, you know, depending on what's going on with your symptoms, the doctor will assess it at that point. If they're not sure, they'll be reaching out to the state Epi for advice, what to do. But the process of getting tested is right now. It's a process, first, you eliminate everything else. So, you'd be tested for the flu, other respiratory panels. And then if those are negative and you still have some of the symptoms, if you have the symptoms of COVID-19, then they'll offer you the test. And that can be done, right now, it's, it's being done in a number of places, somewhat, sometimes at a doctor's office, sometime in the hospital, sometimes outside the hospital. Different, you've seen different towns are doing that, testing differently. And at the moment, then, the test goes to DPH for, that's the main lab. I think that will open up, and as more labs can do the testing in the next weeks, coming weeks, you know, again, you may see this spike in numbers as people get tested. But you can't just decide, I want to be tested. You have to meet some really strict criteria, and you should work with your doctor on that.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Cox?
To follow up on Councilor Memmhard's question. First one being, if you do not have insurance and you don't have a primary care to call to make an appointment, what, what are the suggestions at this point? As far as, say, they meet the criteria, they, they're uneasy, they're feeling ill, what do we do?
I mean, there's, they could get linked up to a primary care. So, in Massachusetts, we have pretty good coverage. We would work with our partners at the Gloucester Family Health Center or Leahy, other primary care providers, to get that person linked into someone. If they were symptomatic and sick and had things, you know, they were actively, if they had symptoms, they would probably have to go to an emergency room. I don't know. Or, I mean, it's kind of the same as, as if you had the flu and you didn't have insurance, it's, it's not great. And this is where the gaps in our healthcare system are a real problem. In Massachusetts, we're pretty lucky, but throughout the country, where there are 33 million people without insurance, it's a real problem when you have something like this coming through because people aren't linked to a primary care. They don't have things set up. They're probably not managing their underlying chronic disease in the first place. So, they're going to wind up having things like this hit them harder.
And my other question is, there's been a lot of conversation, mostly on Facebook, about travel has slowed down. People are, the flights, everything are lower. There are actual people, you know, going away and taking this advantage of the lower flights and stuff. Are there any countries that are an automatic quarantine when you get back to the states? Or, I mean, obviously, Italy and China would be high on the list, but do we know of any other, you know, when you're coming through passport control in Boston, are they taking temperatures at this point? Are they looking for people? Are there certain countries that are an automatic? Or is it more of a self-quarantine for two weeks kind of thing?
Right. Good question. And that's one of the pieces of guidance that's changing rapidly, and that also feels unclear to people. So, if you're coming into the country from China, you would have, and this was implemented So if you're coming into the country from China, you would have, and this was implemented about two weeks ago, you would have been directed to one of the 11 airports that the CDC set up for screening. So you would automatically, anyone coming from China would go through one of those 11 airports, they would be screened. If you were symptomatic, high risk, you would be put into quarantine somewhere. If you were not, you would be sent back to your home community, say that was Gloucester, and we would be informed. The local health department would say, Melissa's back from China, she's in your community, you need to monitor her, she's self-quarantining, you need to call her daily and, and get a temperature recording. So that is happening. There's 800 people in the Commonwealth alone who, who are in that, who are in that self-quarantining. But no one is going out to their house. Then the second wave of travel hit a little bit later. That's Italy, South Korea, I'm drawing a blank, Japan, what's that, Iran, it was, I think, in the first wave through the 11 airports. The other countries, the second wave of countries, there is, they are not being rerouted, they're just coming into our airports throughout the country every day. And so they're being asked, not really sure exactly how and by who, but they're being asked to self-quarantine for two weeks, anyone coming from Italy or those other countries. Also, yesterday, they added anyone getting off a cruise ship should self-quarantine for two weeks, regardless of where or what. So that's the advice. We're not monitoring any of those people in that second group that come in from those other countries. If they don't come through one of the 11 airports, local public health is not monitoring them. So we don't know about them. They're here, all around us, and, you know, there, there are cases around, so. Did that answer your question? Yeah.
Counselor Pat.
Yes. First of all, thank you, Karen, for being so, so efficient and going over this in such wonderful detail. A question about the way we operate in government. Obviously, there are open meeting laws. Whether it be a city council, whether it be a subcommittee of the city council, whether it be the school committee, or other commissions or whatever, in the, in the city of Gloucester, you have agendas and you have meetings in public places.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, tonight, we have a very small crowd. Say, two weeks ago, you know, there were a couple hundred people here, at least, in our individual, you know, subcommitting meetings, in, normally in a much smaller, tighter space, et cetera. And we're required to have, things have to be posted, as far as, you know, when your meetings are going to be held. People that are before you have to get notifications about things. And then, again, we have to worry about how we're all going to come along. Where does the decision process come from? Is it from yourself, from the emergency management, to tell us that we are going to, you know, this time, we're going to put a hold on, say, on city business until XYZ has happened or something has changed? Or, you know, how do we tell people that are coming into a meeting that after they've been told not to do XYZ, you know, older people not to come in, or congregate, or whatever, and then, and yet, how are we going to have a meeting with, you know, that could involve, say, 20 or 200 people?
Right. I think that's a great question. I think it's the question we should all be thinking about, is, you know, how do we continue operating whatever it is that we do? Run a city, run a health department, run a business? You guys do have certain requirements for open meeting, accessibility for your meeting.
We can't do it, you can't get Mr. Pope to, you know, have our city council meetings and everybody being home.
Right, yeah.
You want to talk about this?
Yes.
Okay.
All going to meet in the mayor's office.
Well, no, actually, it's the call of the city council chair, if he decides that, that, you know, it's going to be a full night meeting. Tonight, I sent out emails to our interfaith commission saying, we know we're not going to cancel your worship, but any other concerns, large meetings over 25, please postpone. They just canceled the town meeting, and, and you can do it right quickly, the town meeting, because right now, it's the budget in the state house. And if they keep prolonging their town meetings, they have no budget because it goes after July. So, but they have to do that. They just canceled the one, I just got a text from Bruce. I also emailed the chamber, and tomorrow's event is canceled, and Steve, I believe you have that, and you'll give that information. We have to make calls that sometimes, you know what, it won't be a, a, a large notice, it won't be a big notice. Hopefully, with social media, like, people don't have it. I canceled the bingo's at the senior center. I know they're going to be upset, but you know what, when you have large people, large quantity, especially the most vulnerable, it's going to be very difficult. So there's not going to be no more senior bingo for a little bit, and the St. Patty's Little Luncheon is going to be. So it's up to all of us to decide, especially the businesses out there, what they want to do and not want to do, especially, it's a state of emergency. So the governor already told you, really, that a lot of stuff, if you can do it, most of the colleges now are not calling their students back. They said, when spring break, Harvard and Amherst says, you know what, stay home, we'll work through the computer system, you do it through that way, and a lot of others are following. Just because we don't have any cases doesn't mean, you know, there isn't any. Like you said, it's, they're being tested now. You'll see tonight's article, the Addison Gilbert Hospital is going to test everyone that goes into the emergency room. So they're being proactive. Salem is doing it differently. Each community takes the state of emergency the way they want to. We'll be working closely with the city council as we have with everyone else. We also planned, if we do close a school, what's going to happen to those children who get free lunch? How are we going to get lunch to them if their families are home? How are we going to get ones, if, we have six, let me tell you, we have six complexes of elderly. We have 1,218 residents who live in either Riverdale, Mayport, and some of the Gloucester elderly. 475 elderly, we have one across the street. We have two nursing homes, but if you consider the radius of within five miles, Denmark is right there, so three nursing homes, PACE, Open Door, we have daycares, we have social daycare, you have the Grace Center, you have the Action, you have all of this. We are working together. Rest assured that we didn't just start. Soon as we heard this, I want to applaud the Board of Health for supporting Karen and our director, right on top of this, some of you have been helping out too. We have a great team in place. I know some people think we're overreacting, and I look at it as training and process. This is a training process because you just never know. Someone said this was not going to happen. We do this in the summer, we do it in the winter too, when there are storms. So we're very lucky that we have this community we live in, and force comes to us, I'm shutting the bridge.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to touch on this to Counselor Pat. I think we're going to keep operating as business as usual. You know, we have to self-police ourselves, like, we all came in this evening. Normally, we all shake hands, we just kind of greeted each other. You know, if you're not feeling well, well, Counselor Holmgren wasn't feeling well this evening, so she stayed home. So I think it's a lot of self-policing also, to, to keep yourself healthy and keep others around you healthy, but.
Right. My, my, my point was more to have Karen to inform the public as we're recorded here, et cetera, to let them know what, you know, where we are going. This is why, you know, again, the mayor's saying what they've said, the governor has just come out, and, you know, they've made quite a few changes by making their declaration of emergency today, and it is going to affect, like, the, the state's budget is going to get affected by this. So, you know, it'll trickle down, and yes, it will affect us. And obviously, as the council president, you'll, in discussion with the health and emergency management people, will, you know, will get through and will pay attention. But my, my biggest intent was to make sure we get the, the proper word out to the, to the public, because they're the ones that are going to question.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And it's a great question, and the mayor gave you a lot of great information on that. Just to reiterate what she said, we, we will be watching this literally hour by hour and communicating with you guys. So the Department of Public Health, we, we will be listening to the DPH office in Boston for the state, and we'll be monitoring it here locally, we'll be giving you guidance, we'll be sharing information that we have. And, you know, again, some of it is weeding through the guidance and making common sense decisions around what's crowded and what's the, what's the population attending the event, you know, what's the, who's coming, that's, you know, who's, is, if it's a high-risk group, or, so we'll be making those decisions as we go, but we'll also largely be taking our advice from DPH as well. And should there be more community transmission or more cases, there'll be certain things that we, we just have to do, or will, will make sense to do at that point, but we'll keep you posted.
Are there any councilor, more councilor questions? Counselor Memhard.
I just wanted to tag on at the very end, just to recognize and thank Dr. Rich Segal and Fred Cowan.
Cowan's here, yeah.
From the Board of Health.
Yeah.
Recognizing them and the contribution, and, and the fact that we have a, a Board of Health that's very active in the community, working with Karen and your department.
Yes. I feel very fortunate to be here with, with all of them and the team, the team of managers, the mayor's office, and all of you who are really concerned about this issue and are following it and are helping us get the word out in a consistent, calm way to protect our residents. So it's a great place.
Great. Is there anything else?
You can email me if you have concerns, questions. We would rather it come to us, if you're hearing things. We can, we can help put down rumors, we can help get information out, we can help process things, but we, we might triage, so just, you can feel free to email those through to us.
Thank you, Karen. I want to thank Fred and Rich too. I know you really look forward to coming up here and speaking at the podium this evening, so we apologize you didn't get up here. So awesome presentation, guys. Thank you. And like I said earlier, self-awareness, self-policing each other, so that way you're not sharing cell phones, Madam Mayor.
[laughing]
Anyway. I know. All right, so.
Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
What are we doing? Next order of business is the confirmation of new appointments.
Counselor Nolan.
First on the list tonight, we have the Human Rights Commission, Moisa Alves. You want to come up and say a few words, or you just want to wave to everybody? That'd be great. Thank you for coming. On a motion by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Holgram, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Moisa Alves to the Human Rights Commission, term to expire February 14th, 2023, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to commend the choice and commend Moisa for volunteering. She is a wonderful representative of our community and will be very well, the city will be very well served by her joining this commission.
I agree. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Moisa, thank you very much for volunteering. Counselor Nolan.
The next we have for Open Space and Recreation Committee, David Sargent. He's going to be fulfilling an unexpired term. David, you here tonight? How you doing? Do you have anything you want to say? Just raise your hand.
My head's full of open space.
On a motion by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Holgram, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint David Sargent to the Open Space and Recreation Committee, term to expire February 14th, 2021, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Dave for your continuous service to the city. So thank you for what you do, not only today but in the past. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Dave. Counselor Nolan.
Next, we have the Tourism Commission. We have Patricia Gates. Patricia, how you doing tonight? On a motion by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Holgram, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Patricia Gates to the Tourism Committee, term to expire February 14th, 2023, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Patty, thank you for what you do, we appreciate you.
Thank you. We have Francesco Majotta, who couldn't be here tonight because he works on Tuesdays. So on a motion by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Holgram, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Francesca Majotta to the Tourism Commission, Francesco, term to expire 2/14/23, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Frank Majotta.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you, Frank. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business.
We're going to take things out of business real quick, and we're going to have a little honor one of our, our 10th city councilor this evening. So, Madam Mayor and Counselor Gilman, would you like to join me up at the podium, please? Also you too, Dana.
Put it on record. Just record it.
As city councilors and mayor of the city of Gloucester, we are delighted to salute
you on the occasion of your retirement. On behalf of all citizens of Gloucester, we offer our sincere thanks for, for your years of outstanding employment in the city clerk's, Gloucester City Clerk's office.
Dana, as you move into the next chapter of your life, know that you will be missed in that our very best wishes and thoughts go with you. You have set the bar high for future clerk of committees with your knowledge on matters including special counsel permits, special events, city ordinances, and procedures. We will never forget your professional expertise and your commitment to the city council, city administration, and citizens of Gloucester. As this chapter of your life ends, may a new and exceptional one begin.
Congratulations on this 10th day of March 2020. Hereby presented at your final city council meeting on 2020-21 Gloucester City Council in the office of the mayor, wish you a happy and well-deserved retirement. And we all sign this.
From all of us.
From the whole city council and the mayor. Congratulations.
You guys want to take a two-minute recess for Dana?
Can we take, can we take a picture? Can we take a picture of Dana? We won't touch each other.
I'll take a picture for you. We all use each other. Sure. Oh, no. I was going to take the picture.
[applause]
All right, so we're back in session. So Dana, thank you for all you've done for all of us. I know a lot of us come in here really green, and you whip us into shape, and we appreciate what you do, and we sincerely are grateful that you are the 10th city councilor, so.
I so move.
Yes. We're going to miss you.
Unanimous roll call.
So we're going to have to come over and visit you. My daughter lives there, so I'll be there a lot more than you think. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Are there any councillors who would like to pull anything, any matters from the consent agenda? Counselor Cox.
I'd love to, but I don't have a microphone. Item number three, City Council 2020-005, election of the city auditor pursuant to city charter. Section 2-7A to, to move to refer it to budget and finance rather than ONA.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Entertain a motion to consent, to accept the consent agenda as amended?
So move second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please? We have a unanimous consent calendar. Are there any councillors that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Are there any councilors that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. I move, motion to.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of March 5th.
Counselor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one absent, to recommend that the City Council approve supplemental appropriation 2020 SA 27 in the amount of $255,000 for the purpose of purchasing transcription services for transcribing minutes until the clerk of committee's position is filled since she left us. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion. This is a supplemental appropriation, so this is going to be a roll call. Madam Clerk, can we have the roll, please?
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Blank.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
And Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
The City Council motion for supplemental appropriation 2020 SA 27 passes on a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Counselor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one absent, to recommend the City Council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a federal grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences passed through the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners for the Library Services and Technology Grant Director Program, social infrastructure for fiscal year 2020 for $1,000 for the purpose, training library personnel for an eight-hour training on mental health first aid. This grant expires September 30th, 2020 with no local matching funds. And I so move.
And I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
It's pretty self-explanatory. Good God, if I could say it, that'd be great. Self-explanatory. They're having an eight-hour class on mental health first aid at the library. I was extremely impressed with, we are just accepting this grant for $1,000 and it doesn't expire until September 30th, 2020, but this is how serious they're taking it. Bless you that they already have the class scheduled and it's going to be within the next 60 days. So I'm very, very happy that the library moved forward so quickly with this.
Awesome. Good news. It's been moved and seconded. This is a simple majority, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Counselor Cox.
Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, one absent, to recommend the City Council approve supplemental appropriation 2020 SA 24 in the amount of $30,000 for the purpose of funding various public works, road, and roadside spring projects. And I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, this is kind of an annual thing that DPW does is they move money out of one account where road openings and stuff like that, so they can do road repairs.
Thank you. Simple majority, all in favor? Aye.
It's an essay.
Oh, my bad. It's a roll call.
Okay. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holgram's absent. Counselor Blank.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
And Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
City Council motion to approve SA supplemental appropriation 2020 SA 24 passes on a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you. Counselor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one absent, to recommend the City Council approve Special Budgetary Transfer 2020 SBT 8 in the amount of $4,924.85 for the purpose of funding a projected deficit in the police criminal investigation salary account due to the Superior Officers' Contract Settlement that included retroactive pay. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Pretty self-explanatory on this one as well.
All righty, simple majority, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Counselor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one absent, to recommend the City Council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half, a state grant from Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Department of Criminal Justice, Information Services, for a motor vehicle automated citation and crash system equipment grant with a value of up to $2,555 for the purpose of receiving six electronic citation printers, associated software, thermal paper for printing citations, installation, and training for the police department. There's no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
There's a grant that they applied for. It's going, there's six printers, they're going to be installed in six of the main cars, and they, it's just a better system for citations. They will no longer be handwritten. And this is, this is just the citations, so hopefully it'll be less loss to the city for.
Integrated with the state, too.
Yes, and it's integrated with the state system. So it's just, hopefully there's going to be less overall loss. It's less paper. The printer will obviously print out a citation for the violator, but it's all automated, which is going to be fabulous.
Great. It's always nice to have a grant to help our local law enforcement. So there's a motion and a second. This is a simple majority, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. And we have the next order of.
I want to recognize Counselor Pat.
Counselor Pat.
Yes, I'd like to declare under Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, that I am the sole signatory on the bank account held by the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority, as well as being the only remaining active member of the GRA, and as such, I'll be unable to participate at all in the next order of business.
Thank you, Counselor Pat. Counselor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one absent, to recommend that the City Council approve supplemental appropriation 2020 SA 25 in the amount of $100,000 for the purpose, whoa.
Number six. Is it?
Okay, excuse me, one second, please. Hold on. Yeah. I have the minutes.
The 36,000.
Give me a second, please. That's not going to actually help me.
Right.
Sorry. All right. Sorry, I won't report you. I was wondering where that was going. All right.
Let's move around.
Starting over. Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one opposed, that the City Council accept $36,824.86 from the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority to be held in a city agency fund for a period of five years from the date of acceptance of these funds by the City Council. Should the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority become active again within the five-year timeframe and request the funds, that money will revert to the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority. If the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority remains inactive for five years from the date of acceptance by the City Council, then the funds will revert to the City of Gloucester General Fund. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 121B, Section 4, if the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority has determined there's no further need for its existence, the City Council approves the dissolution of the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Basically, what happened was the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority had money on an off-site account, and that this is a completely normal course of business for a group such as this, where they took money in and now it's kind of a defunct group, as Barry said. He is the only member of it, and it's not an active group any longer. So he is basically giving the money to the city to put in a reserve account, and should the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority become functional again, if there's appointments to it, then they can ask for the money back. But in five years, if they are still nonexistent, then the money will fall to the General Fund. It was asked that Budget and Finance, if that five years does happen, that we, as the City Council, can vote to assign it to GDIC or something like-minded, and that obviously it would come back before the City Council to reallocate, so.
Okay, great. So motion and second, this is a simple majority, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Counselor Pat, come on back up. Counselor Cox.
Stop me if you've heard this before. Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one absent, to recommend the City Council approve supplemental appropriation 2020 SA 25 in the amount of $100,000 for the purpose of funding drain repairs on Warner Street. And I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is part of the Trask Street repairs that are being done. They discovered that there was more extensive damage to some of the pipes in the area, mainly on Warner Street during the construction from the Mass Works Project, the Fuller Project, as you say. So while the road is in disrepair, they are going to go through and fix those.
Thank you. This is a supplemental appropriation, so Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Blank.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
And Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
The City Council motion for supplemental appropriation 2020 SA 25 passes on a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you. Counselor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one absent, to recommend the City Council approve supplemental appropriation 2020 SA 26 in the amount of $200,000 for the purpose of funding various building repairs that includes the upgrades to the restrooms at the O'Malley Innovation Middle School. And I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
This appropriation is for the restroom improvements for the most part at the O'Malley Innovation Middle School. This is the school district's second-biggest school, and there is a need to continue to invest in the facility along with additional site repairs. The DPW will replace the rusting metal restroom partitions with PVC partitions that are durable. New flooring epoxy-based will be laid through a contractor that is a special process, which will be easier to keep clean. They will be working in coordination with the school principal on the school's needs. The DPW also plans to replace panels in the school's courtyard along with handicap accessibility upgrades.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. This is a supplemental appropriation. Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Blank.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
And Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
City Council motion to approve SA 26 passes on a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, and one absent.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Great job. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is Ordinance Administration Standing Committee Report of March 3rd.
Counselor Nolan.
There are no matters under this heading for council action.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Plan Development Standing Committee meeting was canceled on March 4th, so the next is a scheduled public hearing, public hearing 2020-008, loan authorization request for the Briar Neck Neighborhood Paving Betterment in the amount of $435,000.
All righty, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody here that would like to speak in favor. Welcome, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Counselors. John Dunn, CFO. So at your last meeting, you approved a loan order for water work to be done throughout the spring and summer. The big portion of that was replacement of water lines and mains in the Briar Neck area. This is the second piece of that, which is the paving betterment that will be done after the water work has been done. So like the most recent paving betterment projects that we've done, this is going to be 100% bettered through the abutters, and it has functioned well in the past, and we hope to continue to do this.
Sounds like a tongue twister. Betterment for the abutters, right?
Say that three times fast, yeah.
I know, I'm reading it. All right, thank you, John. Is there anybody else in here that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
There are none.
Are there any councilor questions? Seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the following loan authorization as follows. Ordered that the City of Gloucester appropriates $435,000 to pay costs of permanent repairs, including paving, to private ways in the Briar Neck neighborhood, including costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.5, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. Although any borrowing by the city to meet this appropriation shall constitute a general obligation of the city and a pledge of its full faith and credit, 100% of the amount needed to repay any borrowing pursuant to this order shall be raised in the first instance through the assessment of betterment upon the abutters of the private way in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 80, and any other applicable authority. The mayor and any other appropriate officials of the city, it's 7-5. Yeah. Yeah. I didn't say 75. Okay. Yeah. The mayor and any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to take any and all action necessary to assess the betterment described above, the term of which shall not exceed 10 years or such shorter time as prescribed by Mass General Law. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further ordered, that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws, any or all of the bonds authorized by this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for those purposes, and I so move.
I'll second that.
All righty, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counselor, let's go first. Counselor Pat.
Memhard says it's its neighborhood.
Counselor Pat. Counselor Memhard, sorry.
Counselor Pat.
Very briefly, all I wanted to do was to compliment our DPW director, Mike Hale, and our CFO, John Dunn, for working together to get this program done, and for how important this is throughout our entire city, because in every ward, we have this type of situation, and this is a wonderful way of succeeding and partnering together with the city and the citizens to get some of this work accomplished.
Here, here. Counselor Memhard.
Thank you. And in turn, I would like to thank the efforts of the residents in the Briar Neck community. This is a complicated project. This is a complicated project. It entails a total of initially six, now eight streets. It's a big project, and not only is the road being repaved, that's, that's the, the surface of it, but we have the water infrastructure, and even more importantly, the natural gas infrastructure, all being addressed as a part of this project. So, it ends up being a remarkable accomplishment for the neighborhood in terms of infrastructure improvement. And Doug Fifeield, Sam Silverman, and Chuck Everett, on behalf of the Briar Neck Association, have really done yeoman's work to accomplish this complicated project and foster it through with the help, as Barry said, of, of Mike Hale and the DPW and the administration. But it's a significant project, and something that we'll all be very proud of for, I hope, many, many, many years ahead. So, thank you for your efforts, and thank you to the city for partnering with our residents in this way.
Thank you. Councillor Gilman.
So, I grew up in Briar Neck. I lived there for 29 years as a kid, starting when I was 11 in the summers, but then full-time for many, many years after that. These were my former neighbors. The roads have been brutal for a long time, and it's really, it's a great opportunity right now. And from what I have heard from Councillor Memhard, you all worked really well together with Mike Hale, with your ward councillor. This is just, it's just great to see it get this far. So, good job, and thank you. Councillor Nolan, this was your betterment process, so job well done. Thank you.
Kudos to all involved. Councillor Nolan.
I want to thank Councillor Memhard and also the Briar Neck Association. I've been involved with a number of these now. It's, it's a painstaking process, but it is easier than it was before. The end result is a lot greater. I'm very happy for you guys. The upgraded infrastructure is just unbelievable. It's already happened in Mangwood Road and, and on Ocean Avenue, and to bring fire hydrants to a neighborhood that didn't have them and proper water resources is a definite plus. And I think for the 29 years that Councillor Gilman has lived there, that she may be required to pay part of your betterment.
I'll second that.
You have to re-creuse yourself, you know me.
Alright. Watch out for that, boss.
I was just worried about her story lasting from when she was 11 years old, so...
I'm glad we can have, have fun, poke, poke fun at each other and still get things done up here, so thank you, everyone. So, we have a motion. We have a second. This is a, a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, can we have the roll, please?
Councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councillor Pat.
Yes.
Councillor Cox. Councillor Gilman.
Yes.
Councillor Hoagrim. Oh, she's absent, I'm sorry. Councillor Blank.
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor Memhard.
Oh, okay. Yes.
And Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Okay. The City Council motion for loan authorization request for the Briar Neck neighborhood paving betterment in the amount of $435,000 passes on a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Alright. Great, great job, everybody. Yeah. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the update on the Magnolia Woods Oversight and Advisory Committee by City Council Representative, Councillor Sean Nolan.
Councillor Nolan.
There's actually nothing new to report, as the DPW is working with the state on some final information, and hopefully, we can get some of our projects taken care of shortly.
Thank you, Sean. Next, we're gonna have the, the councillors' requests to the mayor. So, we'll start over at Councillor Pat.
I'm just wondering if, if we could possibly request of the mayor to not accept Dana's retirement, that we have to keep her on. Just, just wanted to, in, in writing, thank you, especially from a rookie councillor, for all your help and guidance, and wishing you well.
Councillor Nolan.
All set tonight.
Councillor McCarthy. Councillor O'Hara.
Just want to thank everyone, including Councillor Blank, who donated blood yesterday at the Magnolia Library. Forty-nine donations were collected, and that will help in excess of 150 people, so thank you very much. Were you there? Hey, I appreciate it. I know Councillor Nolan was there in total spirit. Thank you.
Mine's B positive. That's just like me. Be positive, baby.
The next collection is May 11th, so anyone who wants to donate can call 1-800-RED-CROSS. Thank you, Dana.
Councillor Memhard.
I would like just to follow up on Councillor Pat's comments. I once too, just a brief, a few years ago, was a rookie councillor on budget and finance, and Dana, as clerk of committees, was extraordinarily helpful, and I so move her retirement accordingly. I would also like to just take this opportunity to, on a personal note, recognize this Thursday was an exciting day for me. My, my third granddaughter, Martha Rose Kahoon, arrived at 10 o'clock in the morning on Thursday in Beverly Hospital, and she's beautiful. And then the next day, on Friday, I celebrated my mother, Pollyann Hunter Memhard's 90th birthday, which was a wonderful family occasion, and I just wanted to share those landmarks with all of you, because for all of us, those are important events. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna try to refrain from calling Dana a quitter and leaving us. Congratulations on your retirement, but I know I'm, this, I will not be done seeing you, because we have a monthly lunch date, hopefully. I just want to remind everybody on the Action Groundbreaking on next Friday, the 20th, 9:30 to 10:30 downtown. I hope you all can make it.
Harbor Village?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman.
Ditto to what everyone said about Dana. Dana, you, you clearly have been a great help in P and D. I don't know what I would have done without you, so you will be very well missed, so thank you. Also, just to note, on a personal level, my daughter's getting married at the Mount Washington Hotel on March 21st. We've bought 150 favors of sanitizers, just like what you and Councillor Blank were using with their little emblem on it, and I just ask that you all pray for, that this wedding goes off okay in a week and a half, so, thank you.
Is that our invitation? That's alright. Yeah, I'll take it. It's beautiful this time of year. I have just one announcement from the mayor's office. The Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce College and Job Fair, to be held tomorrow evening, has been postponed to a later date, so as soon as we get more information on that, we will share it with you. And that is it from, from announcements. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move, second.
All in favor? Aye. Good job, everyone. Thank you very much.